Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the December 8th City Council Work Session. I have a couple interesting items coming up today, and the first one is 858 Pearl Street property. City Manager.
Well, thank you, Mayor, and thank you for letting us have the time here today to talk about 858 Pearl, the disposition of 858 Pearl. As you remember, we -- you all had declared that surplus property about a year ago, and since that time, we've worked through a couple different opportunities, and this is a really good opportunity that we feel is coming up for future use of 858 Pearl. Denny Bro from Planning Development is going to go through the deal points with you, and we'll be happy to answer questions, and I think we'll go ahead and just launch right into that.
Thank you, and the action today that is considered for approval is the sale of the 858 Pearl property to Master Development. As Christie mentioned, we took all the necessary steps to declare the property surplus back in 2009, and we provided legal notice, we solicited offers to purchase the property, advertised the property in 2009. We received two offers at that time, the Network Charter School and another from Steve Master of Master Development, and when the Charter School deal did not materialize, Master Development approached the city and expressed continued interest in the property which we're talking about today. Master Development is a local firm, they've been very active recently, they develop -- have developed multiple retail outlets along Coburg Road, they're currently redeveloping the Valley -- the old Valley River Cinema property across from Valley River. They plan to acquire and redevelop the Taco Time Building, which is in their plans at this point. They also own and occupy the building just north of 858 Pearl, the building immediately north of Full City Coffee. Master's preferred concept for the property is to convert the building to housing on the upper floors, approximately 15 units of housing are anticipated at this point, and they would have some commercial office uses or possibly some retail, but likely commercial office uses for the ground floor. I use the term preferred concept because Master has expressed the need for some flexibility in their approach for the redevelopment. Their intent at this point is to move forward with a housing concept, however, there's a lot of uncertainty in the real estate markets these days, and they may need to consider an office use if they get to the point where the housing is not feasible. So therefore, it's important to note that the approval of the sale of the property would not be project-specific, and that's consistent with the request for offers that we originally advertised, which had no use criteria placed on the sale of the property. An outline of terms for the sales included in Attachment A of your packet. The proposed purchase price is $1 million, with $700,000 of that paid in cash at closing. The remaining $300,000 would be paid in the form of a note payable to the city, with annual payments paid in the amount of the net cash flow achieved up and above the developers' targeted 14 percent rate of return. In other words, every dollar above the 14 percent return would come to the city until we reach a point in the future where we have received $300,000. We wouldn't collect more than $300,000. Also, the balance owing would be due and payable in full if the property is sold, or if it's refinanced and cash is taken out of that refinanced transaction. And we can talk about that a little bit if you have more questions about that. This formula-based repayment structure is similar to what we used in a portion of the Beam financing, and going further back is what we used in a portion of the Broadway Place project as well. Master has requested nine months to close the sale transaction, which they feel is needed to perform their due diligence and to achieve some financing for the construction on the project. Within that nine months, Master has asked for a 100-day due diligence period upfront, and that will allow him to look at the condition of the building, consider design options for the property, get some cost estimates, et cetera. Once the due diligence period has expired, Master would be required to make a $25,000 nonrefundable deposit, and closing would occur in this scenario no later than September, assuming a purchase and sale agreement would be signed, say, January 1st. Master intends to pursue the Mupti tax exemption on the housing portion of the project, although we're not making any commitments at this time other than to process that application through council at a future date. He's also requested 25 designated parking spaces for the projects, which we can accommodate within the current parking supply that we have. There would be no parking on site, obviously.
Obviously.
The property would be sold as-is in its current condition, and the terms in the agreement would not allow demolition as the initial use for the property unless there's an immediate new construction to follow. Obviously, we don't want another vacant hole downtown.
That's right.
However, we're not anticipating, and Master is not anticipating, any demolition at this point. An updated appraisal on the property was conducted in May of this year, which indicated a market value of 1.2 million. The value was based on a conclusion that a commercial office use for the building would be the highest and best use for the property. Our experience suggests that the value of the property for a housing project would be lower based on the significant cost necessarily convert that office, old office building to housing, and, you know, coupled with heightened risk experience in the real estate markets and the fact that the interest in the property over the past 18 months has been very limited, and that, you know, traditionally, we've used sale price as a tool to see, you know, desirable redevelopment of properties downtown, particularly for a housing project as the intended use, we consider the purchase price, the proposed purchase price, and the contingent payment approach that's being proposed as well, to be a reasonable approach to move forward with the sale of the project. The recommendation is to authorize the City Manager to enter into a purchase and sale agreement with Master Development based on the terms and conditions that we included in the council packet.
Thank you. So, question I have, if I understand you right, Denny, even if it doesn't end up being used for housing, you thought it was most -- the proposal was most acceptable because of the use for housing, but it may not be, end up being used for that?
That is correct. I think the sale is, the assumption that is implied here is that we're moving forward with the sale, and it could, the intent is housing, but it could be, end up being an office use, depending on, you know, how that feasibility work goes, what's the cost, you know, a desirable office redevelopment is not a terrible outcome for a building that's been vacant for a couple years.
I would just say that we're, we've certainly had a lot of experience with how tough it can be sometimes to put those together, so I really do get that, and I also like to say how much we'd love to have it be housing, so, because that's the goals that we've been working on for a long time, so I'm certainly hope that that works out, and other than that, it sounds good to go to me, so, other folks? Yes, Jennifer?
I just want to say that I will definitely support this, I'm excited to get this taken care of, and it does also remind me, though, that we do have an inventory of surplus properties, so I hope that once this is taken care of, that we'll just continue to move down the list of surplus properties and unload those from our inventory. Thank you.
Others? Andrew?
So, Denny, so they're conceptually, I'm in support of this, I think it's a good idea to sell and get money for the city altogether, but I'm, my question is about, if they're, just kind of reiterating for the public, if there's no housing, then there's no tax exemption, correct?
That is correct.
And have you had any other reasonable offers? Have we had any other?
There's only been two offers, and that's from the Charter School and this Master Development.
Okay. I knew at one time there was a, somebody was trying to do something alternative with it, and they weren't bringing any money to the table, and that's what I mean by reasonable, so.
I think either a dozen or 15 interested parties who at least asked for information, and that we gave information too early on, but these are the only two that actually materialized into an offer.
Okay. That's all, thank you.
Got Alan, and then Mike?
When was that, that we asked?
Mid-2009, around July, I think, is when we first advertised.
So it's been over a year since we asked if there's any other questions?
There have been signs up at that site, noting that it's for sale for quite a while.
It's been highly, in the media, highly covered in the media as far as availability.
But we haven't asked, but people haven't volunteered that they'd be interested.
We sent out a, you know, put it out on the market for sale.
A year and a half ago.
Yes, that's the first time it went out on the market.
We have, we've had it posted for sale, we've had flyers out in front of the building, we've, you know, obviously, the newspapers have covered the properties on several occasions.
So it's been out on the marketplace for, not just our solicitation, for interest in it. I, too, would love to see this be housing, and I understand that's tough, which is why we haven't seen any, and this is, Mupti downtown is an appropriate use for me, I have problems in other places where it's not needed, like in the West University Neighborhood in particular, where we're seeing almost all housing go up, most of it not going up with, without Mupti, and yet, we're still giving it away. But downtown, I think that's a completely different story. I did have a question about the, so the May 2010 appraisal was 1.2 million, and our sale price is $1.
Yes.
Rationale for the negotiation of the 16 percent discount?
There's a few factors. One is, clearly, his intent is to convert that to housing, and the appraisal's based on a commercial office use, as the highest and best use, in fact, to reuse it as-is as a commercial office building. You know, to convert it to housing is a much more challenging, there's a lot of expense that needs to go into, and it changes the economics of that, that real estate value, because you have to put so much into the building, and the rents for housing are not going to be more than an office use, generally, they're actually lower per square foot than an office use, so in other projects that we've looked at, we've derived a lower value for a housing project versus a commercial office use. Another example is the Bennett Project, where his first attempt was to do housing, didn't pencil out, but a commercial office building project does pencil out, so the conclusion is that the residual value of that land is lower in the case for a housing project.
Although, we're not requiring him to do housing, but we're giving him the $200,000.
That is correct, and there's risk in this market, you know.
Why would we do that?
That, there's, there's some risk in this market regardless. To do a spec office building with no prospective tenants, highly risky. I don't think you would get a market value transaction when you have no tenant lined up, and it's a spec office development, so I think the expectation and our experience is for other properties that we sold, the old library and other, is traditionally, they've sold slightly below market value, but.
So if we did, it would be unlikely we'd get the appraised value?
In this market, it's, that would be very speculative, yeah.
So, both of my questions really revolve around the note. I know we get 700 upfront, and then 300,000 that gets paid back in annual payments after they make their 14 percent rate of return. Is there a time limit on that note, or is it?
No.
So, have you done spreadsheet analysis that looked at our likelihood of getting that payment, and if there's no timeframe, there is a possibility we'll never get the $300,000?
There is that risk, absolutely, and it's the same risk that we've taken with Beam and other projects that we've involved with as well. We don't have a fully fleshed reform at this point, because they don't, they haven't really gotten into the building to figure out how much it's going to cost to rehab, and, you know, done the market analysis of what those units will rent for and so forth, so it's speculative at this point. We don't really know what timeline we're looking at. At some point, we anticipate that property would sell, and that's the most logical point where you would receive that, that payment. It might not occur in the first few years, as rents, you know, stabilize later on, we might start seeing some payments. That's what's occurred in Broadway Place, where it took several years before we saw payments coming through that agreement, which is a similar agreement.
But if they ever sold the property?
It's due on sale, yes.
It would be due on sale, so eventually, we would get that, so we could almost consider that a zero-interest loan for that period of time.
We're participating, we're a partner in this, and we're participating in, you know, the success of the project, is how I would consider it, yeah.
If it were open-ended and with the possibility of us never getting that, I wouldn't support this, but the fact that it's tied to the purchase, or the resale, that might be down the road someday, but, so I kind of think of that as a zero-interest loan, helping them get there, and hopefully, like with the, what's the property at the other end of the mall?
Broadway Place.
Broadway Place, that we will eventually get that money back sooner than the sale, so with that, I think I'd support it.
Mike?
Figure I'll throw in with Alan here, and if he's going to keep beating his dead horse, I'd probably keep beating mine a little bit, too, here.
Another rule.
His is Mupti, of course, but mine, City Hall. So, in the article that I wrote for the Register Guard, one of the things that I mentioned, taking off from what Jennifer said, was the list of assets and properties that the city owns that we should be, in my opinion, selling and putting aside for the renovation or the rebuilding of our city hall, and of course, I, I hope it's on the side of the river myself, but.
Oh, Mike, I never heard that before.
Yeah, I know. So, my question is, what's the manager have in mind for the $1 million?
A trip? No.
With the $700,000?
Bonus? Sorry.
Go pull, Mayor.
But the current thinking is, is that we'd want to put that into a broad definition of the implementation of Envision Eugene strategies. And so, remember, part of what we're, we'll be bringing to the council at some point is, is strategies to move forward on Envision Eugene, there are going to be tactics that will be required of that, we don't know what all those are yet. Some of those will actually require funding, whether actually a planning process or something bricks-and-mortar-ish, and so, and the thought is, is one way to start seeding that, the funding of that, is to put this money into that kind of a, an account. I say a broad definition because we don't know what that's going to look like yet, so that's the, our intent.
Well, I got to tell you, I'm not going to make it a part of the motion, because I want this to pass cleanly, but my strong suggestion would be that you add it to facility reserve, because the money, this is a City of Eugene facility that we're selling. To me, it makes sense to take this money, put it into the facility reserve that we'll use to defray the cost that we're eventually going to ask the taxpayers to participate in, of renovating or rebuilding a city hall at some point, wherever that may be, so.
Eventually, the council will be the one that appropriates the dollars. The dollars will come in as unappropriated monies, and so at some future date, either through supplemental budget or through the budget process, the council has to appropriate those dollars, and then at that time, council can choose to put them wherever they choose to.
Okay, thank you, sir.
George?
Well, I'm very supportive of this, and I'm glad to see that we're continuing to move forward with things in the downtown area, and I agree with Mike, I think that money should be put somewhere for future use for renovation or building a new city hall. I think we have to show the taxpayers that we're honest, honestly trying our best to come up with some money to at least defray some of the money that they're going to have to come up with. My question is, in reference to the environmental conditions, I know there's going to be an environmental investigation, and it's unknown what type of results we're going to get. My concern is about the unfavorable results. It says that it's based on the information provided, the buyer may either move forward with the purchase of the site or rescind the offer. My question is, are we going to be allowed some room for negotiations for mitigations, depending on what the results are? If he just outright says, you know, this is a, this is a kill, a deal killer, a dill killer.
Deal killer.
Thank you.
Are we going to be able, at least, to try to open up a dialogue and see if we can work something out?
Yes, and in the, in the past, we've had language in agreements that implies that it could be negotiated based on each party's willingness and interest in doing that. We did not commit to doing that, or imply that we would, but in real practice, we would, I would assume. Glenn wants to add that, anything?
Yeah, I was just concerned that, I mean, it didn't actually say that anywhere in the AIS, I just wanted to make sure that we had our bases covered on that.
And we have actually talked to him about that as well.
Thank you.
Anything else? Mike, you want to put the motion on the table?
I will, Mayor. Moved to authorize the City Manager to enter into a purchase and sale agreement with Master Development for the disposition of the 858 Pearl Street property, consistent with the terms and conditions included in Attachment A.
Seconded. Moved and seconded. Further discussion? All those in favor, please indicate. Eight in favor and none in opposition, passes, so move forward, thank you very much, and make that housing work.
Yes.
Yeah, that'd be good.
All right. Next item on our agenda is the downtown public safety zone ordinance.
Thanks, Mayor, and I'll turn it over to our police.
Yeah.
I need to turn the page here, Mike.
Well, this one I'm on.
We're having a little sidebar conversation, sorry.
Sorry about that.
He wanted to be sure he got in the queue before he started the conversation.
I got a couple things to say on this one.
I put him at the end, if I were you.
I'm hoping one's going to do.
All right, with that.
I'll just point out a few things before you begin your discussion. The changes that we've presented since the public hearing are on, in the AIS, and first item is that we would add to the ordinance a statement that the person has the right to utilize the city's advocacy program. The advocate that would be provided is not an attorney, would not act as an attorney, their function would be to explain the service, or explain the process, and to let them know what their options are, but they would, they'd be sure that the person would understand the procedure. The municipal court already has an advocacy program, paso a paso, it's people that help folks who speak only Spanish through the process of going through different court proceedings in municipal court. So, the municipal court was able to estimate the costs of adding an advocacy program for this unique, discreet purpose, and is very confident that it can be, that we could provide this for less than $20,000 a fiscal year, and the city would be able to absorb that expense. And the other item added would be the removal of the temporary exclusion from the ordinance, and I think what's created some confusion around this, we've contributed to the confusion, which is partly how we conduct business, proving to be effective for us in a couple of ways, but that wasn't the intent here. We've liberally used the term temporary, so just to, just to have some vernacular that you can use during your discussion to keep it simple, that temporary exclusion is just the very brief exclusion that is in the current ordinance that enables a judge to exclude someone from the zone for a few days before they have a right, before their hearing date. So, an officer would issue someone a citation, request in their report that the person be excluded temporarily. When the court sees that within a day or two, the court could, whether the defendant is present or not, exclude them for five to 14 days until the defendant's hearing for an exclusion order. The City Manager's recommendation is that that be eliminated from the ordinance. It's probably the one place where the question of due process is most vulnerable. We would like to see that the ordinance, if moved forward, retain a 90-day exclusion where an advocate could be present, and the one-year exclusion where the defendant is represented by a defense attorney normally. And I think that's probably enough to move your discussion ahead.
Enough to launch the conversation.
Yes.
So, Chief, I just want to express my appreciation for the response to that, the due process question, and I'm, personally, I am, have a hard time with exclusion zone, or the public safety zone, period, but I can live with it a lot better with these two pieces that you're adding, the due process and advocacy, so I appreciate that you've heard that idea and moved on it, and I feel good about that, or better, I would say better. Okay, so with that, Mike, I believe you're up.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Yeah. Well, this is so much fun. I appreciate, too, that the ordinance as currently written is legally defensible from a due process standpoint. That's been the discussion that we've had from the very beginning. I asked for that part to be excluded initially as a way to move this forward with greater degree of unanimity, and I'm glad that staff has put that forward in a way that makes it easy for us to agree to do it. I personally am happy and fine with the way the ordinance exists, but I recognize that there are a number of people in our community who feel some concern around the issue of due process as it pertains to 4.876, so I'm willing to support that as a part of the motion to take that out as an amendment to the reauthorization of the motion, or the, of the ordinance, to take that immediate or in temporary exclusion out for the sake of greater agreement in our community. As has been the case with every motion I've made this year as council president, I've tried to maintain a consistent policy that even if I disagree with it, if there's clear council support for parts of a motion, to put those parts forward as the, as the chair's job in making the motion. I think with this, there are still some concerns with a number of counselors around the advocacy part, and so I'll make the motion initially intending to capture all of staff's recommendations with regard to the addition of sex crimes and the statutory parts, and then, as I mentioned, the part where I would like to see it changed with 4.876, and then we'll allow the other part to be a separate discussion when it comes time for me to make that motion, and I'll do that in a second round, please, Mayor. If you'll put me down for a second round, please.
Okay. Chris?
Thank you, and I also appreciate your desire to be flexible in trying to create and adapt this ordinance as it goes along, and I would agree with Mike that being able to make this more broadly acceptable to the community is one of the trade-offs we have to consider, and that's why I was asking Judge Allen how often the temporary exclusion is used versus the other kinds of exclusions, and trying to craft to see if eliminating this piece would have a significant material impact on the core of what this is trying to do. And I'm comfortable that the core is still valid, the core is still in place, particularly with the addition of the additional offenses that can be added to it. I think we've made it, I think we've crafted it better, and by removing this piece, I don't think we're going to significantly impact, hopefully, the core pieces, but once again, you evaluate this as we go along. If we find that that has created a problem, we can always address that at a later date, but I like the gesture we're making by taking this out. With regard to the advocacy, I've given that a lot of thought, and, and, once again, it's a matter of the cost versus what you get, and I think one of the issues that's very important is that the legal system we have, whether it's at the larger level or at our level, needs to be as accessible and understandable to people as it can be, and I think if you have a lot of the people who have been impacted by this particular ordinance are not familiar with the system, I don't want to give them legal advice. I don't want to assume the liability or the cost of providing legal advice, but I think it behooves us, as we would do in many other areas, to be able to assist people to navigate the system. To me, that's what I view this as doing, is helping them navigate the system, not to provide legal representation, and I think you've made that distinction really well, which is why I can support the addition of this when it comes up. I think the cost is reasonable for what you get for it, and I think we're trying to achieve a reasonable balance with this, and I think the movement that's been made, and the City Manager's recommendation, is moving toward a balance that some may like, some may not, but once again, this is a constantly evolving animal, and I think the current evolution is one we should give a try for a while to see how it works.
Andrea?
Thank you, Mayor. So, Chief, is, you're asking for a sunset date of 18, a sunset date of 18 months, and that is your absolute best guess at when you'll have officers on the street, the, the critical mass of officers down there?
Yes.
Okay, and my question about the advocacy piece, I'm, I'm hearing, you know, my peers concerned about the, I'm not hearing, I assume that they are concerned about the cost of putting money towards this, from the comments at our last meeting when we discussed this. So, the conversations that have happened with the two social service agencies, are they thinking more of a case-by-case piece, or have they gotten into that piece of where, you know, I mean, because I think $20,000 is a lot of money, and, you know, if it's not even going to be, if it ends up not even being used by the folks that we're trying to target, I'm just curious on how we're going to, how the billing's going to happen, and I don't know if that's a question for later.
Yeah, those are details that I'm not familiar with. I do know that many court has a lot of experience with this, and has a plan where it can be implemented quickly and applied as needed. Municipal Court has a contract with defense attorneys, so they're, they're, have practices for being flexible and either. being flexible in either providing an attorney where one's may be needed, like in custody arrangements, and also providing them on a case-by-case basis. So the answer is, the municipal court has experience in doing these kinds of things efficiently and at the best cost, so I'm confident they can pull it off.
All right, thank you.
Okay, George Poling.
So the advocacy piece, well, I am just having a bad time trying to, is that adding a part-time position, or is that just adding duties to somebody that's already there?
It would not mean adding an FTE to the City of Eugene, and it would not be putting duties on someone who already works for the city. It would be best described as a contract that we would have with either an outside organization like Whitebird, or St. Vincent de Paul, or with an outside party, not associated with those organizations, or maybe even volunteers.
So that individual, or individuals, they may split it up to have a couple of different people, are they going to be going through any type of training that you or your people are gonna put on, or the court's people, or, and who's gonna monitor that they don't step over that line from an advocacy position to giving legal advice?
Municipal court would be responsible for the contract and the arrangements, so they would ensure that they're trained, and the meaning and intent of the ordinance and of the city council with this. There's always at least one attorney in the courtroom, the judge, and presiding judge would be sure, I'm confident, and sure that they aren't violating the law by practicing as attorneys.
I appreciate the position that you've taken on the temporary exclusion. You know, I, at first, was not in favor of getting, giving that up. You know, there are other, like your restraining order and your stalking orders that actually restrict people's movements, even to a greater degree than this does, that go into effect once the paper is served, and before they go before a judge. So that's why I was in favor of leaving the temporary exclusion in there. But, you know, based on the information that you've given us and the approach that you're taking, I'm okay with supporting removing that at this time. You know, this may not be the perfect, or the solution to our problem, but it is a tool that can be used. And with the addition of the officers, I think that the actual problems that we're facing in the downtown area will be addressed. You know, there's some concern that, well, you're just moving the problem elsewhere. This is where the problem is occurring. This is where it needs to be addressed, and we need to take some action, because we're hearing it from the public of all the negativity that's going on in the downtown. Now, it's not all negative going on downtown, there's a lot of positive things that are going on, and we, I personally appreciate the fact that we are having that type of change going over in our downtown area. I just think that this is going to eliminate some of the problems and add to some of the benefits to the downtown area. So I'm really glad to see that we're going with this. And in case you don't have those officers on board in 18 months, we will be able to come back to the council with this and extend the sunset, is that correct?
Yes, legally, the manager can bring something back to you, just like this, and ask him that you extend the sunset an additional whatever months.
I know, based on my experience, I know sometimes the plans that you have for getting people on board and trained and actually out on the street working can't necessarily follow a timetable. So there are some glitches in that training and hiring process, so I don't want to really lock us down too tight on a deadline on that. I have three seconds.
Oh, I couldn't read it.
She couldn't see.
It felt blinking, Ben. Jennifer.
Thank you. Chief, my issue is still around the advocacy program. I'm confused as to how we can offer advocacy for these people who have been cited by an officer, but we don't provide advocacy for everybody who's been cited by a Eugene police officer everywhere. I just feel like this is possibly opening the door to a larger advocacy program, and how can we legally only provide it for one group and not another?
The, we do, the court does provide advocates for people who speak only Spanish, or speak Spanish as their primary language, to help them through other processes, criminal processes in municipal court. This is the only civil process, I believe, that the municipal court handles, so it is, you know, very uniquely designed just for this purpose. And then your other question was, how do we prevent this from expanding to other areas? I guess the answer is that, as a city council, that would be your role to ensure that that doesn't happen. I don't think without a change in ordinance, it could expand to other areas.
Right, unless the council directs the manager to expand the program beyond what's in the motion, it wouldn't be provided to anybody else. Legally, the city is not obligated to provide an advocate to anybody in some kind of process just because the council chooses to provide an advocate in this process. So legally, it wouldn't be a problem. It's really more of a policy question for you. If the council decides to do it in this circumstance, would the council feel compelled to do it in other circumstances? Legally, you don't have to do it, this does not create a legal precedent.
Okay, thank you, Glenn. So when the downtown public safety zone goes away in 18 months, will this advocacy program also go away?
That's the design, that it would go away, yes. The ordinance enables it, the direction from council to city manager mandates it for this particular purpose.
Okay, well, I, I just totally have trouble with this, and then I just wanted to echo Andrea's, a follow-up on Andrea's questioning about the contract. I guess I would, she's right, $20,000 is a lot of money. I guess I would prefer that it be set up so that the advocate does the work and bills us hourly, as opposed to a flat rate of $20,000 for the next 18 months, and they just chip away at it whether or not they have a customer or not, and they get $20,000. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does. And our arrangement, our arrangement with the current advocacy program is by the hour, so I'm confident that that's the plan in this case, too.
And have there been any complaints about lack of advocacy for the folks that have already, the 90-some folks that have already been through the system? I'm just, I'm not aware of any complaints around this.
Neither am I.
So I feel like this is a solution looking for a problem. So I, I just, I'm not, I can't support the advocacy piece of this.
George Brown.
I won't support the ordinance for reasons I've stated before. And these, you know, doing away with the pre-hearing exclusions and providing advocates, adding the sex offenses, this is like putting lipstick on a gorilla. You know, you can give it a boa, you can give it ruby red slippers, it's still a gorilla. It hasn't been shown, I don't think that the statistics prove that it's effective. You know, there's two categories of crime that have gone down, minor categories, there's the police department's own words, alcohol offenses and trespass. Those have gone down within the zone, they've gone up everywhere outside the zone. If this got transferred, assaults are actually up. Adding sex offenses is kind of a feel-good thing, wow, let's crack down on that. There were 15 sex offenses in two and a half years, statistics were taken, 12 of them were misdemeanors. I honestly, that probably mirrors just about any zone in town, is my guess, without seeing more complete statistics. So I, I just, I don't know, I just, I haven't seen evidence that it's working, I haven't seen evidence that it's useful, I won't be able to support it.
Allen.
I support all the additions, especially the advocacy and the elimination of the temporary exclusions. I want to thank staff for working diligently to work that out when I made that request. And I appreciate the council flexibility and being willingness to listen to this and hear how it could change. I didn't support the original one, in part because of the constitutionality and the due process questions that we had about it. And then when we got the report back, I was concerned about the fact that 60% of the folks that are excluded are homeless, and the likelihood, but we didn't ask the question, is that the rest of them are probably low-income folks and potentially low-education folks. And then we learned about the temporary exclusions, I had a problem with that, too. And I do have questions about the effectiveness, seems like we're moving pieces around and moving them out of the downtown into other areas, so hopefully we don't, we're not dealing with those problems, but essentially, probably will. So I think the extension's gonna pass. So that put me in the position of being a symbolic no vote, or working to change and make it better from my perspective, and I don't believe in voting for changes and then voting no on it. So while I don't like the extension, and I don't support it, I will support these changes and support the motion. Had my brothers, I wouldn't have an exclusion zone. And I do support that by-the-hour arrangement for that advocate, I think that's a good idea.
Betty.
Well, I voted against it the first time, and I'll vote against it again, regardless of some minor changes, as I like George's lipstick, and the gorilla's a nice change from a pig. I've heard people say this is legally justified, I would prefer that it be morally justified, but not just legally. I don't think it's morally justified. I would like, morally defensible, you said, yeah. Chief, can you give an example of a case of someone who would not be punished in any other way, who has been excluded to the benefit of downtown?
A person could be charged with a crime, given a 90-day exclusion, and then found not guilty at trial. Oh, I'm sorry, I must have misunderstood you then.
I wanted a case, I don't, not asking you the name of the person, but a specific case where someone was excluded who would not have, could not have been charged with a crime. That's the only punishment available, in other words.
If I'm understanding your question, a person cannot be excluded unless they have, there's a reason to believe that they've committed a crime and criminal action is moving forward.
Then they're excluded pending a trial, is that what's happening?
90-day exclusion could happen pending a trial, yes.
How about the one-year exclusion?
The one-year exclusion would happen upon conviction.
I see rape is one of the things mentioned here, that is a crime, isn't it?
Yes.
And why do we need, do we want this person to go somewhere else and commit rape while we're waiting?
No, we don't.
But, as I see it, you're just putting people in different places. And I don't, and you're doing it before they are, as you say, before they're convicted, so you don't really know. And I see a lot of these here that I think are crimes. Other things like, what's sexual penetration in the second degree?
It is a crime in Oregon to commit rape with a foreign object.
Is that a second degree?
Pardon me?
Is that what second degree means?
Yes, it's a felony.
But there are other remedies besides exclusion?
There's imprisonment.
And I saw something about manufacture of heroin, manufacturer of methamphetamine, those are crimes, aren't they?
Yes, they are.
And not too likely they'd be doing them downtown, is it?
Well, the statutes are written to include the offense of manufacture and delivery, so it reads that way, but it includes sale of those drugs.
How about nudity, it says prohibited nudity, what kind of nudity is prohibited?
Is there more than one code?
That's what it says right here, prohibited nudity.
I can't wait to hear this.
It's on the list, right here in front of me.
Streaking would be prohibited nudity.
But if you stand still?
Or not streaking, but being nude in public, where one's genitals are visible to others in a public place is prohibited nudity.
Okay, maybe, okay, so it can be everything but, if you had a G-string, it'd be okay.
That would, well, one would have to see how it, it could be okay, yes.
But don't test it, Betty.
Theft in the third degree, theft in the second degree, all of these things are already, they're already crimes.
Yes, they are.
People could be arrested. What you want to do, or what you are doing, is just saying, go somewhere else.
Essentially, that's true. Because we have a jail with very little capacity, incarceration really isn't an option. So in many cases, for the offenses here in other communities, a person would be arrested and they'd be placed in jail, there'd be no need to exclude them because they'd be confined to the jail until their trial. But we don't have that as an option here, really. We put people in jail for minor offenses like theft and disorderly conduct, and they're immediately released and returned to an area where they continue to be disruptive.
Can they also come back downtown if you don't have a place to put them?
I'm sorry?
They can also come back downtown, can't they?
Yes.
If you, after you exclude them.
That's true.
Same thing as jail, they can come back.
But what we found is when they do, when they do that, they learn their lesson. They're arrested for violating the exclusion ordinance, and they don't come back.
And then they'll be put in jail.
They could be put in jail, they could be warned or issued a citation, and all three of those options have been used by our officers.
But you could have done that in the first place. Okay, I'm very, I'm concerned about the rightness of excluding people from an area, and I'm also concerned about just dissipating the criminal behavior. And I don't think it would be good in a park or out by the river, which is also a park, or in other shopping areas in town. And the best thing is to dilute, it's like they say pollution, solution to pollution is dilution, it's also a solution to undesirable people if there are, I know, I see it.
Okay, stop.
In a second. And I don't, I think it would be better to have everybody together. Thanks. I'll stop.
Thank you. So just a comment that I want to make is, it seems to me, and you can tell me if I'm wrong, Chief, but it seems to me, I mean, this isn't just an issue around the public safety zone. The fact is that whenever we interrupt a behavior somewhere, it tends to move somewhere else, but at the same time, we find that it loses its intensity, because if people aren't repeating the same behavior in the same place with the same people. So it has, it has the advantage of lessening the impact by the relocation, you don't get rid of it, but you can de-intensify the problem. Is that a correct?
Yeah, that's right. And to help us with that effort is your appropriation of funds to establish a downtown team that will, and the condition you're describing is particularly true with street crimes and behavior crimes, the establishment of the team will allow us to put those officers where those crimes are happening, and over time, we will reduce behavior crime.
I always reflect on when we have problems in parks and places like that. We know that those people may still continue that behavior somewhere else, but it helps the neighborhood, it helps the intensity of where that's happening when it gets dispersed somewhere else. You don't solve it, but you, you at least improve the situation somewhat. And the other thing that I want to say, and I'm not the right person to say it, but because I think people who are actually officers downtown would be much better at doing this, but I know that one of the things that our officers have deep concern about are some of the young females in our downtown, and the kind of predatory situations they find themselves, and then the kinds of sexual offenses that end up happening around that population. And so I am sure that the reason, one of the reasons they want to add this to the categories has to do with some real deep concern about what's happening to young girls in particular who come into the downtown. So again, if you make that behavior less likely to happen there, you're just, you don't get rid of the, these people necessarily, but you've got, you have a reduction in the amount of predatory behavior happening in a concentrated area in our downtown, on a concentrated part of our population. Is that?
Yes, it is.
Okay, just wanted to, it is important. All right, Mike, you want to put something?
Yeah, I do, but first I want to say, I agree entirely with your last comment. We talked about that a good deal at the police commission, and I wish all the council could have heard the conversation at police commission and the presentation by the downtown officers who put this into use on a regular basis, and some of the stories told by, like Sergeant Fitzpatrick, about some of these very kind of circumstances when we put forward that recommendation, and I think this will keep our downtown safer. Now, to remain constant, since I've now heard a majority in favor of the idea of the part that I don't- that I don't particularly think we should do, but I'm going to try and make a motion that encompasses all of it to be consistent. So I move to extend the downtown public safety zone for 18 months to April of 2012, adding the sexual violations and crimes portion, adding the revised statutes portion, adding a new section, 4.875, on the issuance of notice to show cause, deleting section 4.876 with regard to the temporary exclusion, and then directing the City Manager to create an advocacy program to be available without cost to persons who've received a notice to show cause under section 4.875 of the Code 1971.
Second, because I'm Vice President, that's my job.
All right. Glenn?
Because we are dealing with an ordinance, you need to move to adopt the ordinance. Everything you just said is how, what we gave you in the packet is the old version of the ordinance as well as a new version of the ordinance. The new version of the ordinance, which is, begins on page 35 of your packet labeled Option B, does everything you just said, except direct the manager to create the advocacy program, and we have a separate motion for you to do that.
Can we just leave, can I just retract the portion I did on the end there and leave the rest of my motion as it was?
If you add to that, add to that by adopting Council Bill 5042, the Option B ordinance concerning the downtown public safety zone.
So moved, and I will retract the last portion.
So it's got everything, it's got everything?
Yeah.
So basically, the beginning of what he said-
Because we have to do the other as a separate motion.
Beginning of what he said is sort of a prefatory to the motion to adopt the ordinance, so it's all in there, but you're making, you're actually asking the Council to adopt the ordinance.
Yes.
Can you make it all as one motion?
No.
I have to do the other part later, so I'm taking that part out and adding what he just said, and that's what I meant to say.
Second was the addition of what I just said.
That is go in the ordinance, right? All right. All those in favor, please indicate. One, two, three, four, five, in opposition, one, two, three, it passes.
Now, I move to direct City Manager to create an advocacy program to be available without cost to persons who have received a notice to show cause under section 4.875 of the Gene Code 1971.
Second.
In seconded, all those in favor, please indicate. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, in opposition, one, it passes. All right, thank you very much, and I think that finishes our business today. Thank you.
Oh, Lucy, I'm coming home.